All right. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here today. It's a pleasure to see you all.
Adam. Ali, I need to call the meeting to order.
Oh, please.
A roll call before we start the presentation, which is fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I will call the meeting to order, the regular meeting of the study session of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente, California, Wednesday, September 8th. And Adam, can you please call and roll?
Yes, sir. Chair Crandall.
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler.
Present.
Chair Pro Tem McCann.
Here.
Commissioner Camp.
Present.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
And Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
Here.
Very good. We have everyone here. We have one item and it is going to be presented by Ali from Best Basket Krieger for the CEQA requirements.
Thank you, Chair Crandall. Yeah, so I am here to speak to you all about CEQA. And you know, today is just going to be a very broad overview. Just so there may be things that you already know, but hopefully we can explore the statute generally together. So as a general outline, what we want to go over today is initially, what's the purpose of CEQA? Why does it matter? Why do we care about it? And then, once we have an idea of that, an overview of the CEQA process, we know it matters. What does that actually mean? How does it play out in real life before cities like San Clemente? When does CEQA apply? Oftentimes, there's a lot of misconception about whether government action is subject to CEQA or not, and we'll explore circumstances, you know, government action that's not subject to CEQA at all, government action that's exempt from CEQA, and action that requires environmental analysis. And then a discussion of the degree of environmental analysis needed, whether an initial study, negative declaration, or EIR is required. So as as an initial basis, what's the basic purpose of CEQA? And you know, before I go further, would it be appropriate for me to ask the Commissioners general familiarity with CEQA?
I'm very familiar with it. We deal with it all the time.
Okay, excellent.
I'm very familiar.
I'm sorry, was that you, Commissioner Prescott?
Yes, I work with CEQA as well.
Okay, excellent. And Chair Crandall, I imagine you're very familiar with CEQA as well.
I am.
I'm very familiar as well.
Okay, so we have a very, very knowledgeable group of Commissioners here. Is there anyone who is not as familiar with CEQA?
I am not.
Okay, all right. So we will, we'll start with the basics. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask me at any point. I, you know, I'd welcome that. I am happy here to hear to speak, but I feel like it would be more engaging if there was a bit of a back and forth. So feel free to, you know, ask any questions at any point if you would like.
Very good. And I just want to remind you, this is being fed to our Facebook channel. So the public is watching and, you know, you're going to have some people that don't even know what CEQA is.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so the basic purpose of CEQA is first and foremost to protect the environment. It is the California Environmental Quality Act passed in 1970, born from the environmental movement of the time. And it, it works to do, to accomplish two primary purposes. One is to inform the public of the environmental impacts of government decisions, to analyze those impacts, and to mitigate or avoid those impacts. And we'll discuss how each of those is accomplished through CEQA. When courts often discuss CEQA, they provide four basic purposes of CEQA. The first is to inform government decision makers and the public about potential significant environmental impacts of proposed activities. And I think that word right there, environmental impacts, is actually, is very significant. Again, this is the Environmental Quality Act. And what that means is we're focused on physical changes to the environment. Social or economic impacts, which some often think should be within the scope of CEQA, is actually not part of the statute at all, at all. So we're really focused on just physical changes to the environment, whether they're direct or indirect. Once a public agency identifies how, you know, what the impacts of a project or government action are, CEQA requires that those impacts be avoided or reduced if feasible. This is often done through mitigation measures, which are presented, and I'll get to these in a bit, through mitigated negative declarations or EIRs, or through alternatives, project alternatives in an EIR. And then finally, CEQA is, is not a, it is different than a lot of the other environmental statutes that we have, like the Clean Water Act or the Clean Air Act. It's not a permit that we obtain, but a process that we go through. And so even if a project has potentially significant and unavoidable environmental impacts, public agency can determine that there are countervailing measures, you know, economic measures or other public benefits that can accrue from a project that, that such that the project can be approved despite any avoid, any unavoidable and significant impact. So it really is, to a large extent, a, a process of disclosing, analyzing and disclosing environmental impacts. There are three primary sources of law that govern CEQA. The first is the statute itself, which is in the Public Resources Code. The second is the state CEQA guidelines. And this is really where a lot of the bulk, where CEQA is really fleshed out. If you've ever heard of categorical exemptions, which are really the most relied upon exemptions to CEQA, they're found in the state CEQA guidelines. And then we have case law to give meaning to the statute and the guidelines. All right, so we have CEQA. We know that it generally requires analysis of environmental impacts, mitigation of those impacts, disclosure of those impacts to the public. When does it apply? Does it always apply? What are the circumstances that trigger it? And and there are a few triggers, and we'll go through them individually here. The first is that it only applies to public agency action. So the, the, the ultimate prerequisite to see, to the application of CEQA is that the government has to take action. It does not apply to private actors. The second is whether the, whether that action qualifies as, quote, "a project under CEQA." And that's a term of art under CEQA. A project is defined as something that can potentially have, potentially change the physical environment. And so if you have government action that doesn't result in a change of environment, for instance, it could be changes to a salary structure, for instance. Could be a government action, but with no impact on the environment. It's, it's not subject to CEQA because it doesn't qualify as a project. Even if a project, even if an action does qualify as a project, the next step is to determine whether it's exempt from CEQA. There's quite a few exemptions, and we'll get into some of them here in a bit. But but a project could have significant environmental impacts and nonetheless be exempt from CEQA if it falls within a statutory exemption, a categorical exemption, or another exemption. And, and we'll dive deeper into that in a bit as well. If a project's not exempt, so again, the first step is you determine whether there's government action. Then you determine if that action qualifies as a project, meaning whether it could physically change the environment. Then determine if it's exempt. If it's not exempt, the next step is a public agency prepares what's called an initial study. And basically, this examines a slew of potential environmental impacts that the activity could cause. Aesthetics, wildfire, utilities, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions. There's an entire list of impacts that are analyzed. And the, the full list is within the, the state CEQA guidelines. And basically, there's a determination is made as to each impact, as to each resource. Will the project have any impact as to this resource? A less than significant impact? Less than significant impact, but only where mitigation is required? Or a significant and unavoidable impact? And based on that level of review, that's what governs what environmental document is prepared. And these are the documents that you may have heard, the most famous of which is the Environmental Impact Report, or EIR. A negative declaration is appropriate where the initial study determines that there is no potential for a significant environmental impact. A MND or mitigated negative declaration is appropriate where the initial study determines that there could be potentially significant impact, but there are mitigation measures that reduce these impacts to a sufficient level. And an EIR is what's prepared when the initial study determines that there will in fact be potentially significant environmental impacts. Once that determination is made, the environmental document is prepared. That environmental document is then released to the public for public review and comment. So that's where the disclosure to the public comes in. With both MNDs and EIRs, the public, the, the document is circulated to the public between 20 and 45 days, depending on the document and the circumstances. And the public has an opportunity to review the document, review the project, it's the project description, and see if they have any additional insights, whether there are potential impacts that may have been overlooked. Whether, in the opinion of the public, there's, there's insufficient analysis of particular impacts, or any other comments that the public may have regarding, regarding the environmental document. At the end of the day, the decision maker, oftentimes the Planning Commission here, depending on the approval at issue, will consider everything. They'll, they'll consider the initial study, they'll consider the environmental document prepared, public comments, and on the basis of the entirety of the record, decide whether to approve the project or disapprove the project. And to be clear, the, the CEQA analysis is separate and apart from the approval of the project. So entirely possible that, you know, the EIR determined that, you know, the, the environmental analysis shows there's no significant impact. And even with that, the Planning Commission would remain free to deny the, deny the project. And conversely, if there is a significant environmental impact, the Planning Commission would remain free to approve the project as long as a statement of overriding considerations is adopted. That's not the end of the CEQA process. It is in terms of a procedural standpoint, but there's always the risk of litigation. And this highlights the importance of complying with CEQA. Again, it's a statute that really promotes public participation. The public are engaged. And so they have an opportunity to challenge any CEQA determination. If there's a determination that the project, the project's environmental impacts were not sufficiently analyzed, the public can, can bring a lawsuit to that effect. It is a very short statute of limitations, meaning the public has a very short period of time to bring a lawsuit, ranging from 30 days after the filing of what's called a notice of determination, which is the document filed after a negative declaration or EIR is prepared, or 35 days after a notice of exemption is prepared and filed with the county clerk. So to take a step-by-step approach, and I think we'll whiz through this because I, that really was a lot there. So thank you for, for staying with me here. The, the first step again is, is there a public agency action trigger? Is there some action by a public agency which brings the, which brings CEQA into play? And again, CEQA does not apply to purely private activities. So if a homeowner cuts down a tree in a backyard, and that doesn't require a government permit, there's no CEQA at issue because there's no government, there's no government activity at issue. Similarly, there's a famous case where an individual completely renovated the interior of a very historic home. The public was very concerned, saying that, you know, this is a historic resource, it's being impacted. CEQA should be at issue. And the court held that the interior of a private residence is not part of the general environment. And so CEQA did not come into play again at all, because again, this was just a private action by a private individual. And without that public agency action, there is no CEQA trigger. Again, CEQA does apply to public activities. And, and this is a very broad, broad definition. Initially, when CEQA was enacted, it was conceived that CEQA would, would apply only to the public agency's decisions. And very early on, courts, courts really expanded that to say, anytime there's any government involvement in any project, CEQA review or CEQA analysis is necessary. So that could be when a permit is issued for a private development, when is, when there's a zone change, when a contract is entered into, or when the public agency, you know, constructs a project in and of itself, whether it's a structure or an infrastructure improvement. Anything that really requires government approval or involvement brings that activity within the realm of CEQA. So as an initial step, again, you have this idea of there's government action. The next question is, is it a project? And there's three tests, three steps to determine whether public agency action qualifies as a project subject to CEQA. The first is, is it a discretionary act? That means, does the public agency have any, does it exercise any judgments in approving or denying a, a permit, for instance, in any activity? Or alternatively, is it ministerial? The idea is, are there objective standards where anytime those objective standards are met, the approval must be issued? In which case, it would be ministerial and not subject to CEQA? Or is it a discretionary act, where really the public agency does have authority to shape the project to respond to environmental concerns? And if that's the case, if the public agency does have that discretion, then the first step of whether that activity is a project subject to CEQA is met. The second, we've already been gone over, it has to be by a public agency. Again, private action does not qualify as action, subject to CEQA. And the third, again, is, does it have potential to result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment? And so a direct impact, for instance, could be, you know, approving the construction of a school. And an indirect, a reasonably foreseeable indirect impact could be, for instance, a zone change, which in and of itself doesn't have any physical impacts, it's just a paper change, but it's going to indirectly result in physical changes as a result. All right, so we have now the public agency having taken action. And, and we've determined that that action does qualify as a project. At this point, there's still a few steps to determine before we determine whether an EIR, for instance, is necessary. And that's the question of whether a project is exempt from CEQA. Now, there are three types of exemptions. Again, these are stat, there's first statutory exemptions. And these are the broadest or most absolute exemptions possible. So there are statutory exemptions apply where, no matter what conceivable environmental impacts a project might have, the legislature has determined that as a matter of law, they are not subject to CEQA. So the environmental impacts of statutorily exempt projects are effectively irrelevant. They are exempt from CEQA, and the legislature has determined them to be so. Then we have a, the most common form of exemption, commonly used exemption, which are called categorical exemptions. We'll go over a few examples of each of these in a minute. But these are, what, the defining feature of these is that they are, they are subject to exceptions. So whereas a statutory exemption applies regardless of the environmental impact, there's six or seven exceptions that apply to categorical exemptions. Most notably, whether a project that, that would otherwise be categorically exempt could result in a significant environmental impact due to unusual circumstances. And it's that unusual circumstances there that really, that really becomes the focus. And finally, there's the common sense exemption. And this is, this is an exemption that applies basically when it just makes sense that the project would not result in environmental impact. Sometimes you have something that looks like it, it could be a project, it could have some impacts on the environment, but it's just clear that it could never have a significant environmental impact. And in those cases, the common sense exemption could apply. As, now, in making these exemption determinations, what the key feature to take into account is whether the exemption determination is supported by substantial evidence. And that means, you know, is this an exemption, you know, is there any reasoning for the exemption that's presented to you as planning commissioners? Is it, you know, for instance, if there's a, you know, as we get into some examples, I think this will make more sense. But the idea is that you can't, as a conclusion, just say something is exempt. There must be facts that really show why the activity falls within the exemption that is being claimed. So to give, there, there are many statutory exceptions. There are dozens and dozens of statutory exemptions. But to give just a couple of examples here, one of the most common relates to emergency procedures. For instance, if there's emergency repairs needed to public service facilities that are needed to maintain essential services. Again, even if that, even if such a project would result in significant environmental impacts, if it falls within the exemption, it is, it is exempt from CEQA. And there are, and there are a few other, and there are many other examples. Restriping streets or highways to relieve congestion being another one. Again, the, the most commonly used exemptions are these categorical exemptions. There's 33 of them. Worrying out, we won't go through each one. But the most commonly used of these categorical exemptions is often the class one through class three exemptions. The class one exemption relates to existing facilities. So for instance, if, if if there's an existing structure and the, the request is for a permit to just have minor alterations to that structure, that would be a categorically exempt project as long as there's no, there's negligible or no expansion of the existing use or former use of that structure. And there could be very, there could be very actually broad implications to this existing facility's exemption. So for example, it also relates to the operation of projects. There was a recent case where the project at issue was the renewal of a lease for a nuclear power plant. And you know, and you had people who said that the operation of a nuclear power plant is a impact that could have an, a activity that could have an impact on the environment, it should be subject to CEQA. The court came down and said, look, the nuclear power plant is an existing facility. The renewal of the lease is governed, falls within the class one exemption, which applies to the leasing of existing structures. And so even, even a relatively large project, such as the renewal of a lease for a nuclear power plant, could be subject to this class one exemption. Another common exemption that is often seen is the class 32 exemption. And this is a very interesting exemption because it's a hybrid exemption that requires much more environmental review than your, than your other categorical exceptions, or really any other exception. It applies to infill development. And there are five, five criteria that need to be met for infill, infill development to fall within this exemption. Has to be consistent with the general plan and zoning, has to be on a small part, or relatively small parcel, no more than five acres, has to be surrounded by urban uses, can't have value as habitat for sensitive species. But most importantly, and very significantly, there needs to be environmental analysis for traffic noise, air quality, and water quality. So unlike other categorical exemptions, which could potentially have a significant noise impact and still be exempt, here, the, the exemption requires analysis of these factors and a determination by the Planning Commission or the city council that the project will not have any of these impacts for the exemption to apply. And generally, a, there will be technical studies provided that will support this exemption. So again, it goes to the idea of substantial evidence. A person, a developer can't come, for instance, and simply say the class 32 exemption applies. There needs to be evidence to show that there's no impact to traffic, noise, air quality, and water quality. And, and also evidence showing that the other criteria of the exemption are met. And finally, there's the common sense exemption, where, which applies only where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question could have a significant effect on the environment. And again, as you can imagine, this doesn't apply to any really, any major project. But this is meant to really cover any gap where an activity really should not be subject to CEQA, but it doesn't neatly fall into any of the statutory or categorical exemptions. So again, we've been talking about this idea of substantial evidence, that substantial evidence needs to support any exemption determination. There are a few places where you can ensure that substantial evidence is included in the record to support your opinion, to, to support a decision. And that's in the notice of exemption, which is filed immediately after a project is approved and determined exempt from CEQA. And what the notice of exemption does, two things, it provides notice to the public that the, that the city has determined a project is exempt from CEQA, and it also triggers a 35-day statute of limitation. So once that notice is filed with the county clerk, the public has 35 days to challenge the city's determination. Of course, the staff report will often be a source of substantial evidence and will detail why a project falls within the exemption. And where resolutions, where resolution is necessary, the findings in the resolution will often also detail some of the substantial evidence or cites to the substantial evidence that supports the exemption determination. All right, so we're at a point where we determine that the project, you know, that we have the public agency action, that action qualifies as a project, it's not exempt from CEQA. We're at the point where a project actually is subject to CEQA. And this is the point where we really begin analyzing environmental impacts. The way we do that typically is through what's called an initial study. And this is a study that, that basically goes through a checklist of over a dozen resources, again, aesthetics, biological resources, tribal cultural resources, cultural resources, impact on utilities, impacts on recreation, there's a whole host of resources. And it analyzes whether the project will have a less than significant, significant with, less than significant with mitigation or a potentially significant and unavoidable impact. And the way it determines that is often through, through threshold of significance. So for instance, if, you know, where, if the project concerns a new industrial facility, and the question is whether the operation of that facility would have a significant noise impact, there's, there are typically numbers, absolute numbers, so a quantitative threshold of significance. And the environmental document will analyze whether this project will exceed that threshold. If it does, it's a potentially significant impact. If it doesn't, it's a less than significant impact. And if it does exceed it, but there are mitigation measures that could be incorporated to reduce that impact to a level of less than that threshold, or less than a significant level, then that, then that determination is documented. And those determinations really govern what environmental document to prepare, whether you prepare, whether a negative declaration is prepared, where again, the, which is prepared when all impacts are less than significant, mitigated negative declaration, where mitigation is required to ensure that all Mitigated negative declaration where mitigation is required to ensure that all impacts are mitigated to less than significant. And an EIR, which is necessary anytime there's a, there's any evidence, there's substantial evidence that the project could result in a significant impact. And we'll get into what this fair argument and substantial evidence means in the context of the MND and EIR in a second. So um, again, the negative declaration applies when there's no substantial evidence, meaning there are no facts, no expert opinion based on facts in light of the whole record before the city that the project could potentially have a significant effect on the environment. And and, and again, we'll, we'll talk, there are two standards that apply here. The fair argument standard uh, again, means that if there's substantial evidence supporting a fair argument, meaning it may be not the most likely argument. But if there's a fair argument that there could be a potentially significant impact, then a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration would not be appropriate and an EIR would be required. Now with an MND, again, you have these mitigation measures um, that can reduce impacts to a level of less than significance. So again, taking noise an example, that could be a uh, a barrier, a wall constructed to ensure that any surrounding residences uh, would not be adversely impacted um, by the project. And for every single one of these resources, there are mitigation measures that could conceivably be possible. We just need, uh, it, but it is important from a legal perspective that they be feasible and enforceable.
Ali, can I ask you a question?
Yes, absolutely, Scott. Uh, Chairman McCann.
What about, um, I'm not chairman, but that's okay. That's great. What about, like if you pay into a fund, let's say you have some mitigation fees. Cause I've heard this and it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Let's say you have a traffic fair share fee to pay. And you, you pay your fair share. Is that, is that considered to be appropriate for mitigating your impacts?
Yeah, so that's often, um, yeah, exactly. That's, so that would, that is often a kind of mitigation measure that is proposed in a MND or an EIR. That is, and there's a variety of circumstances in which that could apply. So for instance, with biological resources, sometimes a um, sometimes the mitigation measure is to pay into a fund that would go towards conservation of areas uh, outside of the project site. With schools, um, development impact fees are considered by law, all the mitigation that is required for um, any increase in enrollment in schools. With VMT, some city, I'm sorry, with transportation. There are mitigation banks that are being developed um, to mitigate impacts that could result from transportation. So to your point, absolutely, that is, that is a form of mitigation that is often used.
Okay, so what about? I've heard, it seems like a gigantic legal stretch to me. But where some cities or attorneys have said, well, if you pay your traffic fee, that traffic, you know, some various improvements that are on a list somewhere to, to get built out of pots of money that are accumulated by the payment of traffic fees. If those improvements never in fact get built, then you never really mitigated anything. Have you ever heard of that legal argument and what do you think of it?
You know, I um, and I'm sorry, is the legal argument that that mitigation measure would necessarily be inadequate because eventually in the future, that, that improvement might not be built?
Exactly. Like they say, well, you never really mitigated anything because the improvement was never built, even if you had this, like some minor fractional share of
Right. So I, you know, and again, this isn't speaking on any specific case, but there um, you know, from a practical perspective, I don't think that could. So one, no, I don't think that um, I don't think that argument would prevail. I, I, I don't think that that mitigation measure would be found inadequate for a couple of reasons. One, because I think there, uh, courts have found that these kinds of mitigation measures to be appropriate. And second, uh, from a practical perspective, there's a thirty-five day statute of limitations or thirty day statute of limitations if a negative declaration or EIR is prepared. Uh, and so someone would only have thirty days to bring a lawsuit, in which time, you know, you couldn't reasonably say that, you know, because you, you didn't, this, this improvement wasn't constructed within thirty days. The EIR is inadequate. But to the point I had made earlier about mitigation measures need to be enforceable. That, that does go to your point. So someone could come and say, listen, you have this, um, you know, there's this uh, development impact fee thing, but if there's no chance, the way it's structured, there's absolutely no way it's conceivably result in any, uh, in any actual construction. Then, then that's a feasibility and enforceability issue. And someone could come within that thirty days and conceivably say that this isn't feasible or enforceable mitigation. But it, but it's a very hypothetical situation.
Okay, thank you very much. On a side note, maybe you should talk BK lawyers because they've taken that stance in, in actions that I'm aware of. But that's, you know, for another discussion another day.
Yeah, and it's very site specific. It's, again, it's very fact specific. It depends on it goes, it goes to enforceability and it uh, goes to the specifics of each thing. So as a matter of law, not every uh, development impact fee is going to uh, be adequate. But courts have often found many of them to be adequate. Again, it's very fact specific.
Excuse me, Ali, can I ask just a follow-up question on that? A specific instance that I'm aware of. Don't want to name any city or anything, but there was a project where those kinds of fees were imposed for street improvement work, widening of a street that was used to access the project. And directly adjacent to the project was literally a mountain that would have to be cut down in order to do the street widening that the city was proposing. How would you deal with a situation like that as a developer? You know, or an architect?
Right.
It seemed unreasonable and you, and you talked about common sense.
So uh, and again, again, everything is very fact specific, so I don't want to speak about very specific issues, but this does go to the definition of a project. And a project, which is what the CEQA analysis needs to uh, review, applies to what's called the whole of the project. And so courts are really clear on this. It's not, you know, for instance, if you have a project that requires seventeen approvals, the environmental review isn't limited to the first approval that may be before you. It's limited to the entirety of the action. And so here in this case, if a mitigation measure has its own independent environmental impacts, those independent environmental impacts would need to be analyzed in the EIR or in the MND or whatever the document may be. Okay, so go, uh, moving along, um, and I, I, I'm also factoring in some time at, at the end as well, and I'd be happy to um, you know, to, to address any other questions. Um, so again, um, negative declaration or MND uh, appropriate only where there's no uh, there's no fair arguments that the proposed project might have a significant impact on the environment. And that means that if there is substant- even if there's conflicting opinion on whether there's going to be a, if there's conflicting opinion on whether there's going to be a significant impact on the environment, then an MND or ND would not be appropriate because then there's a fair argument that there could be a significant impact, even if there's contradicting evidence suggesting that there isn't uh, a potentially significant impact. Okay, in contrast, an EIR is required when, um, you know, it's the flip side of that point. Again, you, if you have, um, if you have any substantial evidence, again, that means facts or expert opinion supported by facts that show that the project could have a significant effect on the environment, at that point, an EIR is uh, needs, should be prepared if it's not exempt. Um, and it does qualify as a project. So again, this EIR, it's generally a, a much more complex document than a, a negative declaration or an MND. They're often, you know, you know, well in excess of a hundred pages, uh, analyzing the various impacts that a project could have. And they are, I mean, both MNDs and EIRs are, are circulated to the public for public review. MND is typically circulated for twenty to thirty days. Uh, and an EIR uh, between thirty and forty-five days. And um, and during this time, the public as well as responsible agencies. So if there are other agencies outside of the city that need to issue approvals for the project, they along with the public would review the project during, uh, would review the EIR or the environmental document during this time. And, and they'll submit comments on it. They'll say, you know, additional analysis needs to be necessary, for instance, as to this resource. Or um, you know, they may, they may propose additional mitigation measures. In general, they'll say, they'll, they'll provide their thoughts on the EIR. And then the city will um, after the public review period, respond to each comment. So one of the things to, to keep in mind, and this is the importance of getting the EIR, um, you know, having a very robust EIR initially or MND initially, is that if the public reviews the document and uh, unveils various deficiencies in the document, and the document needs to be significantly revised in response to those comments. That will result in a recircu- that will require a recirculation of the MND or the EIR. And significant new information is generally defined as um, as basically uh, signi- substantial evidence of a new impact or as or substantial evidence of a mitigation measure that was previously ruled, um, deemed to be not feasible. Basically something that relates to whether a, a project would have more significant impacts than initially disclosed or whether those impacts could be mitigated. And so when that happens, again, uh, the, the EIR or MND will be recirculated to the public. The public will again have an opportunity to review the, the documents. And um, and again, the lead agency here in the city would uh, would respond to each of those documents. Finally, the EIR comes before the planning commission or uh, the, uh, the city council, depending on the approval at issue. Um, and here, again, the uh, the city has a determination to make. And there are two different sets or there are different sets of determinations. There's a CEQA determination to be made. And that's whether the project is either exempt from CEQA, um, or whether a negative declaration or EIR is appropriate. Um, and then separate and apart from the uh, compliance with CEQA, there is a um, a determination to be made whether the, the city will approve this project, whether it will issue the permit or the entitlement at issue. Um, and again, those two things are actually um, are not tied necessarily together. So a um, a a negative declaration, the city may very well find a negative declaration appropriate, but still has authority or discretion, meaning uh, uh, the city could determine that there is no significant environmental impact, but still has the discretion to deny the project. And alternatively, as we'll get to, an EIR might disclose significant and unavoidable impacts. And with a statement of overriding considerations, the city could proceed to approve the project. In each case, regardless of what the determination is by the city, um, again, the key is to ensure that the determination is supported by substantial evidence. Um, in the exemption context, um, this is most prevalent, you know, it applies to all of the exemptions, but it's most true in the infill exemption context. Because again, there you do have um, very specific impact related findings as to noise and air quality and water quality and so forth. But again, generally the idea is you want evidence to show that the project actually is exempt. With the negative declaration, um, the planning commission or the city generally will always have to determine, will have to make its CEQA determination before project approval. So the way it would work sequentially is a, a city adopts a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration before the approval. Uh, and then with the approval, it would adopt what's called the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. And this is what gives enforceability to the mitigation measure. Basically, it's a list of all of the mitigation measures that are um, that are required to ensure that all impacts are reduced to a level of less than significant. And it effectively uh, requires that the mitigation measures be imposed and implemented. So when you have an MND, um, that mitigation monitoring and reporting plan will also need to be approved. And then after the adoption of the, of the negative declaration and the adoption of the uh, MMRP if necessary, a notice of determination is filed after approval. And, and that notice of determination again does two things. It gives notice to the public that the city has made this determination and it triggers a thirty day statute of limitations for the public to challenge the um, to challenge the uh, compliance with CEQA. In the EIR context, um, a, uh, again, the EIR is first certified by the public agency. So that means again, the public agency determines that the EIR does adequately disclose all of the environmental impacts. And does mitigate all impact, all potentially significant impacts to the extent possible. Um, and EIR is different from an MND. And again, an EIR, unlike a, a negative declaration can conclude that the project will result in significant and unavoidable impacts. If that is the case, again, there's a decision before the city of um, you know, of whether to approve the project. It can approve the project, but must um, adopt what's called a statement of overriding considerations, effectively saying there are other considerations at issue that um, that warrant approval of the project notwithstanding the significant and unavoidable impacts. And again, um, just with the, just as with the negative declaration, a notice of determination is filed after project approval to again, give notice of the public, of the city's uh, decision. You know, if there's a statement of overriding considerations adopted, it will give notice to the public of that as well. And again, like with the MND, it triggers a thirty day statute of limitations. Okay, excellent. I uh, am exactly on pace here. Um, and with that, I'd love to uh, entertain any questions that you may have uh, regarding CEQA. Although if it relates to specific, you know, specific questions, um, you know, again, it is going to be very sites, very fact specific in each instance, but to the extent I can, I will try to answer your questions.
Thank you very much, Ali. I, I would like one quick uh, question and include Adam in this one. Uh, when we receive our staff reports that have made a determination and a recommendation on CEQA compliance, has that been reviewed by uh, city attorneys?
You know, I don't know.
If not, when would it be?
I, I can tell you, uh, it is, I think it is often reviewed by city attorneys. I, I know that I personally don't. I personally, as Ali Tahrani, do not personally review each one. Um, we are, but um, but yeah, I review them every single day. So I, I don't want to make a categorical statement. But those are often, you know, I could tell you that every single day we are reviewing those determinations.
Okay, Adam, do you have any uh, input on that? Of when staff would require or request um, legal advice before they send it to the planning commission?
Uh, yes, Chair Randall, um, the deputy city attorney, um, Mal Richardson, reviews our, our resolutions that go before the planning commission. So as part of that review, um, he would, he would um, be reviewing the CEQA determination as well. Some projects uh, will require some additional uh, CEQA review by other BBK attorneys. But uh, the actions before the uh, the planning commission are, are typically uh, reviewed by the um, by our legal counsel.
Very good. Uh, do we have any other questions by commissioners of Ali or Adam on this?
I have a quick question. The ministerial process is language that's embedded in um, a lot of the state legislation. And it avoids CEQA. Is there any time that it doesn't avoid CEQA?
No, if, if a project is ministerial, um, it is not subject to CEQA. Yeah, but exactly to your point, a lot of times the legislature, rather than creating a statutory exemption. Will simply declare a project to to be ministerial in nature, and that will have the effect. Of exempting the project from C Q. And that's often even called a statutory exemption. Even though technically it's not a it's not a project because it's ministerial rather than an exemption. But this has really been arising recently in the housing context where. To to incentivize housing, the legislature has provided incentives. In the affordable housing context to say that certain decisions are are ministerial and not subject to C Q.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Commissioner McCann.
If there's a different documents can have a E I R is to have a statement of overriding considerations. Cannot be approved by a planning commissioner? Does it have to be approved by council?
If the if the final decision making authority is the planning commission, the planning commission can adopt the statement of overriding considerations. And then that could be appealed to the city council.
Thank you. And then. The state, you know, they're they're trying to make housing projects more approvable. And yet. There, you know, so many of them, especially now with V M T requirements are having to go the full E I R route. Is there any effort, do you know, to try and make residential projects? More exempt or get through? The process easier?
You know, I don't know any, I don't know of any specific efforts under or actually, I think S B nine and S B ten, if you're familiar with them. Are, I believe, are trying to do that right now. What I can tell you is that on the exemption front, I think. The the area in which the legislature is most active in C Q on a year to year basis relates to affordable housing. And so it's seemingly every year there are there's new legislation passed that at least incrementally attempts to make affordable housing more accessible. And more streamlined. So. You know, I don't know if there I'm not aware of any beyond S B nine and S B ten, not aware of any other efforts, but it wouldn't surprise me if if the if it continue if that trend continues.
Okay, yeah, it's just funny because they they talk like they want more housing. But then they, you know. Throw in V M T, which basically makes every project have to have an E I R, which just makes it more difficult.
Yeah, with V M T and. And thank you for raising that issue. So again, an E I R and slash MND are required to to review a whole host of resources. One of them is transportation. Very recently in December of, I believe, twenty eighteen. Or maybe even twenty nineteen. The measure of how transportation impacts is. You know, the measure of transportation impacts was changed from level of service, which is effectively traffic as we know it. To V M T. And so what that means is. As a result of this change, if a project increases traffic in your home area. Or like along the street, that is not necessarily an impact on your C Q any longer, at least not a transportation impact. But if a if a project results in what's called an increase of B M T or vehicle miles traveled. That and there are varying thresholds relating to that issue. But the most common of which I believe is fifteen percent baseline condition. So basically, if you're not, if a project isn't reducing B M T. That will often result in a or that could result in a significant environmental impact as transportation. And the reason why the legislature adopt made that that switch. Is effectively to, or one of the reasons is to promote greater infill development. So the idea is if you are, if you are building, if you are constructing development apart from. Where the existing density of people are, that's going to result in greater greenhouse gas emissions because cars are going to have to drive a greater distance. You know, to get to where everything is. And so the idea was having this B M T requirement would incentivize developers in theory. To to focus on increased infill development with mixed uses and other things that would really bring people and jobs in closer proximity.
Right, thank you. So I just wanted to point out to my fellow commissioners that. A city like San Clemente is severely handicapped in this front because. You know, if we have people that are commuting to work, they have to commute a greater distance than, let's say, the county average. And so then it gets we get punished excessively as opposed to, say, Santa Ana or Anaheim. So it's just, it's a really important issue for certain cities, including ours.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ali. Let's go ahead and recess and reconvene at seven o'clock. Very good presentation, Ali. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so we have about five minutes, four to five minutes before we will reconvene.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, it is seven o'clock. Do we have all our commissioners at their desks? I see two. I don't have pictures on yet. Commissioner Tyler's with us. Commissioner Prescott, are you there?
I am. I'm trying to I'm trying to hook up here, but I am here, present.
And I know you have your you're having a deal with your phones, so.
Yes, I'm on I'm on my phone. It's a small profile.
Okay, let's call to order the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, California, Wednesday, September eighth meeting. Adam, would you please do roll call?
All right, Chair Crandall.
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler. Chair Pro Tem McCann.
Here.
Commissioner Camp.
Present.
Commissioner Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
And Commissioner Prescott Lefler.
Here.
Okay, would anyone like to volunteer to do the pledge of allegiance? If not, I will do it. I see no hands at the moment. Okay, very good. Please, Commissioner McCann.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner McCann for stepping up on that. The next item would be special orders of business and presentation. We have none. We have two sets of minutes to approve. First is the minutes from the regular study session meeting of August eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Do we have either a motion with revisions or a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Second. Let's see, we had Commissioner Prescott made the motion and second.
McCacken.
McCacken, very good. We will do a roll roll vote. Commissioner McCacken.
Bye.
Commissioner Camp.
Bye.
Commissioner McCann.
Hi.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Hi.
Commissioner Tyler.
I'm abstaining because I was not present.
Very good. Commissioner Prescott.
Yes.
And Commissioner Crandall is a yes. So we have a six zero one vote with Commissioner Tyler abstaining. The next one is minutes from the regular planning commission meeting of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty one. Do we have a motion or with changes or motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by McCocken.
Second.
Second by McCann. Roll call vote. Commissioner McCocken.
Bye.
Commissioner Camp.
Bye.
Commissioner McCann.
Hi.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Hi.
Commissioner Tyler.
I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Prescott.
Hi.
And Mr. Crandall is an I. So again, six zero one. The next item is oral and written communications. Do we have any? Adam? That you're aware of?
Yes, we have one written communication for this portion of the meeting. And this comes from. Comes from Mark. And. City of residents is left unanswered. Says, I fully support the development of a pump track and dirt jump area. On the vacant land next to the San Clemente Skate Park and San Clemente Single Track. This is an excellent way to get people outside and exercising and will be of great benefit to the community. I have seen the positive impact that pump tracks have had in cities like Truckee and Boulder, Colorado.
Okay, and that was the only one. So we will. Move on to the consent calendar. Do we have any comments on the set calendar, Adam?
Let's see. That would be. Do not have any oral communications or written comments for either of the consent calendar items.
Okay, and we have. Mister Farivar here to answer questions. Does anybody have any questions? For Mr. Farivar on the two items on the consent counter?
Or have. Just as a. Matter of procedure, if there are questions, the the commission should pull these items out of the consent calendar. Otherwise, it'd be most proper to simply take a vote to approve the consent calendar.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody had the opportunity to pull an item if they chose to.
Is the item on the consent? Can you review what items are on the consent calendar calendar for me?
They are two items, a proposed parking prohibition on Camino Capistrano at Delgado. And a conversion of parking prohibition to restrict on Camino. La Pedriza, south of Toledo Park. Those are the two items in the consent calendar. Then we have.
I would like to pull item B. Is that on the deposit? Is that with the bike lane restriping? That is not new business. That is not. That's new business. I just saw it over here.
Yes, new business.
That's an A.
Then I made a mistake. Move on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Cosgrove.
I I move we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion by Cosgrove, a second by Tyler. Roll call vote. Commissioner McCacken.
Bye.
Commissioner Camp.
Bye.
Commissioner McCann.
Hi.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Hi.
Mister Tyler.
Hi.
Mister Prescott.
Yes.
And Commissioner Crandall is an I also passing seven zero. Our next item is public hearing. And we have none. Under new business, we have one item, Camino La Pedriza striping and. Would Commissioner or Mister Farivar want to make a presentation on that?
Chair Crandall, if I could, just so the committee is aware or the council, excuse me, the commission's aware. We do have eight written communications on this item.
Let's read them before we have the presentation. If you could do that.
Okay, the first. The first is anonymous, but they are a resident of San Clemente. We are very opposed to having bike lanes placed on Camino La Pedriza as it poses a serious hazard to the cyclists. As well as all the residents that enter and exit from Pedriza. Drivers along Pedriza are typically going too fast, which already makes it unsafe for those of us driving in and out of streets along Pedriza. It is very difficult to pull out onto Pedriza while watching both ways for traffic. And you only do so at your own risk because forty miles per hour is unheard of since the typical car is driving forty five to sixty miles per hour. What should be done? What should be done in painting bright yellow, orange, oh, excuse me. I believe what they're trying to say is what should be done is painting bright yellow, orange. Speed bumps, which will appear to be actual bumps but are not. We have seen this in other cities and it is very effective slowing down traffic. Forget the bike lanes, concentrate on the safety of the neighbors. The cyclists can find other safe areas in which to ride. There there have been accidents and many near accidents. The last thing a driver needs. Is to watch for a cyclist plus the oncoming cars. This is not the place for bike lanes. My grown son and daughter are avid cyclists, so I know firsthand some of the hazards they face while riding. Don't place other cyclists in harm's way, and this is exactly what you will be doing if you add bike lanes. The second comment comes from Carol Tiberi. Her comment is, I live in the gallery and opposed to bike lanes on Pedriza. It is too narrow and traffic coming all coming over the hill to our driveway is already speeding. Now you want to add bike lanes to the mix. It's an accident waiting to happen. The third comment comes from Chuck Rooney. Please study the problems before creating more problems. The snap decision to solve the speeding electric bikes is not to open bike lanes on Pedriza, but rather to enforce speed limits. Both automobiles and bikes. I fear that the inaction on addressing the speed. Of the spread of speeding electric bikes has backed the city into a corner. That inaction is no longer an alternative. of, uh, the spread of speeding electric bikes has backed the city into a corner. That inaction is no longer an alternative. Uh, the next comment comes from David Anderson. And he has indicated he's a resident of San Clemente. Uh, he says, yes, please, that road is the only way for people who live up the streets to get down to the shopping areas. Hopefully, the marked lanes will serve as a reminder that there are ways of traveling other than cars and that vehicles need to slow down. The next comment comes from Dawn Glasgow. He says, uh, greetings, city planners and planning commission. I have lived in the Toledo Gallery off La Pedriza eighteen years. I came here from Irvine where I was a long-term avid biker. As a biker in and out of my complex, I found riding on La Pedriza on that street going west, then back east was a set was a setup of me to be a biker disaster since there were no striped bike lanes with high-speed cars was invited. Thus, I dropped down to Pico to begin my, uh, to begin and end my bike rides. Your restriping initiative for bike lanes on La Pedriza receives my full one hundred percent support along with all other bikers on this side of Toledo, the e-bikers too. They need to move off our sidewalks and begin using striped bike lanes. Yes, 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 and yes to the initiative to re-stripe La Pedriza for bike lanes. There is plenty of room since the middle of the road is not utilized. Thank you, Dawn. Uh, the next comment comes from James Buck, uh, resident of San Clemente. I'm opposed to the proposed striping of Camino La Pedriza. This is a standard residential street without the width required for a class-two bike lane and on-street parking. There is already numerous residential street for daily parking throughout the whole development. There is no need for bike lanes on a residential street that is three-quarters of a mile in length. It is a mystery to me how this was planned or proposed after eighteen years of use in current condition. The next comment comes from Matt Wilson, resident of San Clemente. As a resident that lives very close to Camino La Pedriza, I'm very supportive of bike lanes. I have two boys, ages nine and seven, that are very active on their bikes, and Camino La Pedriza is their way in and out of the neighborhood. Currently, they use the sidewalk because there is no bike lanes and cars routinely go forty-five miles per hour plus on the street. With a good bike lane, I think this opens up access and also will reduce the likelihood of running into pedestrians on the sidewalk. Big fan of this idea. And our last comment comes from Tom Echols. And he writes, thank you for, uh, the notice we received in the mail regarding the upcoming La Pedriza project. My wife Maureen and I live on the corner of La Pedriza and Caye Altea. We are very pleased to hear about the plan. We do have one area of input for your consideration. When multiple cars are turning off Vista Hermosa into the existing two lanes on La Pedriza, the two lanes quickly merge to one lane a short distance ahead at the first intersection. Which they indicate is their inter- intersection. Many times a day, starting at the entrance onto La, uh, Pedriza, cars fill both lanes and race to be the first into the single lane ahead. Aside from the extremely loud disturbing noise from rapid acceleration, a dangerous situation occurs repeatedly. We are convinced this will result in a very serious accident in the future. This physical threat extends into the Pedriza sidewalk as well as into our property. The restriping should help this situation. However, to accomplish this, the single lane should begin immediately at the corner of La Pedriza and Vista Hermosa. It appears by the plan diagram it will, but we wanted to reach out to you, uh, to be sure it is so. And that is the extent of our written communications on this item.
Thank you very much, Adam, and I apologize for misintroducing you. Is it Said Farivar?
Yes, Said Farivar.
Very good. Um, uh, do you want to make a presentation on this?
Yes, yeah, I prepare a presentation and I wanna share my screen if I can. So my name is Said Farivar. I'm the city civil, senior civil engineer in charge of traffic. And, um, I wanna talk about the Pedriza restriping with considering the additional bike lanes in both directions today. So, um, Camino La Pedriza is scheduled to be slowly filled by October of this year. And per general plans, um, completed street concept, we shall consider the bike lane improvement project as part of any other street, uh, street improvement project. So, um, Pedriza is classified as a local collector and, uh, is carrying the average daily traffic ranging from four thousand at, uh, Avenida Pico to eight thousand at Avenida Vista Hermosa. The street width is approximately forty feet along the road with this posted speed limit of forty miles per hour with no un-street parking along the Pedriza from, uh, from Pico to Hermosa both way and is primary residential. So, um, based on the general plan, um, completed street concept, we investigated the option to provide the bike lane in both directions uh, with considering the elimination of the middle center lane to provide, uh, room for adding the bike lanes. So, um, here is, this picture is showing the existing striping. Um, we're trying to maintain the lane configuration at the intersection and not, uh, like removing any left turn lanes and not changing the travel lane, number of the travel lanes. So I share here the, um, proposed, um, striping plans which shows that, uh, that which includes the, uh, travel lane narrowing to eleven feet to ten feet um, along the road with the, and wherever feasible, we are adding bicycle lane of five feet and the buffer bike lane, uh, where feasible. So, um, if you notice in the striping plan, uh, it's included in the report too. Uh, we're kind of, uh, try to keep the lane configuration at any intersection or driveway location, and we're just eliminating the center lane wherever we require room for providing the bike lane. So on top of this, at the end, um, we have also, um, considered the lane reconfiguration at the intersection of Pico to change the lane configuration from a left, a true and a right lane to a left, a shared through and a right turn lane to increase the capacity of this intersection. So I've listed the benefits to re-stripe the Pedriza. Um, Pedriza Street with, uh, adding bike lane which will narrow the travel lane that will help with speeding issue, which we also received some complaints from the residents in the past regarding the, I mean, their concern about the speeding pedestrian or safety. This will improve, uh, the environment with providing more room for bicyclists and will also visually remind, uh, vehicles to yield to the bicycle and on, understand, I mean, bicycles right of way. That will increase the bicyclist's comfort and confidence and additional, uh, capacity will be provided to that street. And specifically, this, um, additional bike lane will improve the site distance at intersections and help the residents to get out of their driveway. And also, the main important thing is here that we are not changing any lane configuration and we're maintaining the existing turn lanes at driveway. So overall, we received, um, as Adam read, um, all of them, um, we received overall eleven public feedback. Four supported and seven opposed the striping, and I've, uh, I, I'm, I'm showing here the breakdown that, uh, besides those nine, um, emails or public comments on the website, we receive only also two phone calls which, um, I, I mean, both are opposed the striping, and I tried to explain to them um, how this is gonna help with the speeding, which is their main concern on Pedriza. Any questions?
I have a few, but I'll let someone else go first. I do have a few.
Uh, was that Commissioner Prescott?
It was.
Uh, go right ahead.
All right, Seeta, I've been taking some notes and I actually drove up there today. I have to say, I've never been on this street before. I've lived here over ten years. And to say it's narrow is an understatement. It's very, very narrow. So I have a question, a couple of questions. Can you tell me where is the, the most narrow part of the street? You're saying it's gonna be reduced from eleven to ten. Where, where is the, the narrow areas in the street? Is it, would you say about eighty percent of it, fifty percent of it?
So, um, I drove by this street yesterday also to measure a couple of locations to make sure that we have enough room. So, um, based on what I, um, understand, I mean, um, on the road, we measured, uh, let me like go to the presentation to see the planned location. I think the intersection location was at, um, let me see.
Well, while you're looking, I researched some of the footnotes that you provided, and I appreciate that. And the footnotes were saying that in their studies, one is relationship between lane width and speed that reducing this to ten feet was kind of still up in the air, whether it actually reduced the speed. And that they recommended the curb lane width at least fifteen feet to accommodate both vehicles and bicycles. Would there be any area that would be less than fifteen feet?
Oh, no, it's, the minimum is fifteen feet along the road, which will accommodate the ten feet through lane with five feet bike lane.
Is there any signage that would prevent, uh, buses, delivery trucks, moving trucks?
Yeah, this, uh, striping plan is not finalized yet until it gets approval. So we need to show all the detail, uh, like signage for, for bike lane, no parking and also where the bike lane begins and where it ends, including.
If you put a school bus on there and you're on a ten-foot wide lane and the school bus mirrors extend past that, would they encroach onto the bike lane?
No, no, this is not, this is not considered as a truck route or like transit route. But even with like a few, uh, trucks or school bus, that would be okay.
Trash trucks, it would, it would be wide enough for a trash truck?
I, I need to look into it, but, uh, based on what I studied, you know, because it's not only, it's not, it's not considered as a truck route. And if we have to, like, put a sign, we will consider that.
Okay, and one of your benefits said that it would manage, uh, speed and friction resulting from elimination of, of the strip at center median. And according to the footnotes that you provided, it actually states that there is no significant evidence that that would happen. And I was on that road today, and it's a forty-mile road and it has, I, I came in on Pico and you go up onto an incline and then you, then you go down and the speed, I mean, I was going. I was having a difficult time managing it because it's windy in there and, and I'm a cyclist, so this would be the last place that I would want to put my bike, only because of the narrowness that it is so far. I'm willing to be convinced that it's gonna look a lot better, but as it, as the twists and turns in the speed and possibly school buses that you haven't been able to tell me if they, they are going there or trash trucks or, or moving trucks. I, I'm kind of nervous about this, so I'm, I'm looking to be convinced one way or the other here.
So, um, this narrow lanes will help with the, with, with managing the speed. This has been studied before, and after a few months of implementation, we're gonna survey the speed at that location and this will probably change the speed limit in the future.
Okay, I'm going to cite one of your studies that you put as a footnote. It says, there's no consensus in the literature on the relationship between lane width and speed. Some studies have shown speed reduction as much as three miles for every foot of lane narrowing. And you're like, you're narrowing by one foot. Other studies show a more slight speed reduction of about one mile per foot uh, lane narrowing, or no significant effect whatsoever. The study usually and generally agrees that there is wide, um, variabilities between sites suggesting that lane width alone is not responsible for the entire speed reduction. And this was on one of the footnotes. It is relationship between lane width and speed. And I read through this all today, so I'm not quite understanding that you put a benefit as reduction to speed.
That, that actually, that is study, I actually, um, reviewed that study too. This was done in twenty, two thousand three. Those are including the cases studies. It's just, uh, like reporting in different areas, different location, not specifically in San Clemente. But, uh, what we are suggesting is based on the general, uh, recommendation that, and general studies and also based on the guidelines, based on the, the, if you look at the footnote, the footnote number two and four, those are the most recent guidelines. Uh, and also these are besides Caltrans and, uh, MUTCD guidelines as well that we are recommending that narrowing lane will help with the speeding issue. And it's very, um, it's, it's, it will help with in general urban locations, urban, urban area.
I'm, I'm just saying, you put these in the footnotes as reference and it does not support that theory. Thank you. But that's all my questions right now.
Okay, uh, Commissioner McCocken, I see your microphone is on. Two points here are, are we leaving Vista Hermosa, that intersection alone? Where it goes from two lane to one lane, or is there gonna be signage that tries to notify somebody who's not familiar with the area that they're gonna have to immediately decide if they want to go right in the, you know, to go through or turn left at Altia? Are we doing anything to, to make their decision sooner so that one complaint of, you know, cars merging on each other?
I looked at that recommendation. Uh, at this point, we, we're trying to avoid any changing of the lane configuration, especially that segment is very short to reduce the two lane, two lane serving lanes, which is serving Hermosa from both directions. Uh, we're not gonna do that at this point, and if there is gonna be any problem in the future, we need to look into it. But the, when I was driving, that segment is very short to speed up to, uh, to the one lane, which we are, there is existing marking and which we are keeping the existing marking that's directing people to, that's showing the, the number of lanes is going to be reduced from two to one lane.
Okay, plus we monitor, we monitor accidents in that stretch, right?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, my other question is, I'm a little confused on the diagram, like when I see the cross-sections. Like if we start on attachment two and go from Avenida Vista Hermosa and if you follow that all the way up to the top, there's bike lane in that whole stretch, right?
Yes, there is bike, bike lane all the way through.
All right, when you go to the next section, the next section of it that goes up to Corte Viscaya. The bike lane stops at Corte Viscaya?
It doesn't stop. Hmm, it doesn't stop, the bike lane continues, it's just change, we're changing that, uh, like showing as a dash line. That means that it's kind of for turning vehicles, for vehicles making a right turn, they're gonna yield to bicyclists and bicycles, bicyclists are gonna be aware that, uh, vehicles may make a right turn there and they're gonna cross that lane.
Okay, but as you get to the other side, let's say we're heading, you know, towards, uh, Pico. So the, the biker has this wide spot when he gets to the transition at Corte Viscaya and is still going, whatever direction that is, um, heading towards Pico, it looks like the bike lane narrows significantly. Because it's just a line, it's not crosshatched.
So what location exactly you're referring to? Because we're keeping the minimum five feet bike lane, we're not reducing that.
Okay, well, what is it back here as you come back towards Vista Hermosa where it's like crosshatched? It's a lot wider?
Yeah, some, yeah, somewhere are very, um, when we have room, the bike lane are very wider, like seven, up to seven feet. The bike lane, the minimum bike lane we're showing here is five feet.
So is the bike lane continuous throughout La Pedraza?
Yes. And.
Okay, so a single line means, like if you turn the page, that CC, so there is a, there is bike lane as you get to Caya Vista del Sol, that's still bike lane?
Yes, that is still bike lane.
All right, so the crosshatching just means a wider than required bike lane?
The crossing line is, we're showing the dash line, that means that vehicles may cross that bike lane. And I know, I understand in the report, these figures are very tiny to see. But we've shaped the plan, the, the dimension of the bike lane and the road, the travel lane are as shown in cross section.
Commissioner McCocken?
Okay, and when we come, yeah.
Actually, where you see that, I think what you're seeing, you see that kind of crosshatch in certain areas, that's a striped two-foot buffer between the travel and the bike lane. So in some areas, there's, where there's width enough, there's a striped two-foot buffer plus a seven-foot bike lane. And then where there's turning, turning bays, they have to shrink it to a ten-foot travel lane, no buffer and a five-foot bike lane.
Okay, when we come to Avenue to Pico, so the biker can, he's got, they have two decisions. They can stay in the narrow bike lane, or they can stay in the bike lane on the right and go west on Pico. Or is there a bike lane in the, or is that just for cars that has the straight or right turn?
The bike lane is, go ahead.
No, go ahead, just explain to me, what if the biker wants to go left at Avenue to Pico? Is there a bike lane out in the, you know, between the right turn and to go across the intersection like there is at Vista Hermosa and Pico?
Well, yeah, usually based on the regular standard, we put the bike lane at the right to the curb, very close to the curb. As shown in this plan, there is a parking lane and then a bike lane. If they want to make a left turn at that intersection, they need to use the left turn lane.
Okay, now, if we allow parking, where is the parking in the bike lane? If we allow parking, which is on our agenda later, from Cristianitos Road down to Avenue to Pico, how does the bike lane fit in with the parking that we're going to allow from during the daytime?
So the, the parking is gonna be, there is a nine-feet parking lane at the curb, which is gonna be allowed during the day until, from six AM to ten PM.
Okay, what will the, the bikers have to do during that time? Do they have to go up on the curb or do they have to stay out in the traffic lane?
So there is a separate bike lane at that location. We're not mixing the bike lane with the parking lane. Sorry if I didn't understand your question, can you please?
Okay, so the, the bike lane is outside of the parking space? So you would have sidewalk, parking space, bike lane, and then the traffic lanes?
That's correct, that's correct.
All right, okay, all right, those are all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner, do we have any other questions? Commissioner Cosgrove?
Thanks. Can I just get a confirmation on the problem we're trying to solve? Is it speeding? Is that the problem we're trying to solve?
No, speeding is not the problem. It, it is the problem that we receive complaints from people, but it's not the first thing to look at the bicycle lane. We're looking at, like we kind of investigate the additional of bike lane whenever we have any other street improvement. As I explained at the beginning of my presentation, Pedriza is gonna be slowly sealed by the October of this year. And based on the general plan, complete street concept, we shall consider, I mean, the additional of bike lane in any street that we have room.
Okay, so it's not, you're not really pursuing a problem solution framework? You're trying to implement the general plan here?
Yes, but that will help based on the guideline and based on the case studies. It's shown that that will help with improving the speed.
So let me ask you this. Tleca was built after the city was incorporated, after general plan was adopted. Why was that lane, bike lane implementation not done when Tleca was built initially?
I can jump in on that one, I think, to help out. During the, the general plan update, which was about ten years ago, nine years ago. And also, there was a bicycle master plan that's adopted by city council that basically said this is going to be a bicycle-friendly city. And I think, Adam, were you here when that was all prepared by, with Brenda Miller and so forth?
Yes, Chair Crandall, I was, and that's, that's absolutely accurate. The, the bike lanes that are being discussed at this point in time are part of the bicycle master plan. And that was developed as part of the most recent general plan update, which was created after the majority of Tleca was, was already built.
Okay, well, that, that makes sense. I, I feel like the concern that I have about putting a bike lane on here is the fact that we may not, well, let me ask you this. Is there going to be a bike lane buffer for the entire duration of this road from Pico to Vista Hermosa?
At most locations, we have the buffered bike lane, but not at, not all.
About what percent do you not have the buffer?
So, I can tell you that more than fifty percent, I'm not gonna say eighty percent, but it's gonna be about sixty to seventy percent we have the buffered bike lane.
Okay. I mean, that, okay.
It's not accurate, actually, this, this is based on what I see in the plan. I didn't measure the, the length of the road. To provide the accurate answer, I need to measure.
Okay, it's, okay. When considering that we are getting neighborhood concerns about speeding, and I understand that because most of Tleca is on a hill.
Right.
And we have, I live in Tleca, so I don't have, I don't live on this area, but I live in another area that's exactly like this. And people do speed down that hill. It's a kind of difficult, you have to brake if you're not going to speed because the, the, the decline is such that, you know, even if you're coasting, unless you have an EV that slows you down, you're going to speed. One of the things I've seen in my neighborhood, which I think is effective, which I think this neighborhood would benefit from, is a sign that is electronic that measures the speed of the vehicle on the road and flashes their speed with underneath of it is the posted limit. As kind of a visual reminder, hey, you're speeding. This particular roadway does not have the benefit of that electronic sign. And it's implemented on the downhill side. So did you consider, would you consider that, that type of electronic sign on both the descent sides of this road as an additional measure to address the speed of the traffic?
Yeah, we should, we can consider this electronic sign, which are kind of warning driveways. Kind of self-enforcement is not like no one is gonna catch vehicles. It's just a warning that you're like, if you're speeding, it's gonna warn you.
Yeah.
And you're, yeah.
Because I think it's helpful, it's right in your face, it's flashing, it's bright, you can't miss it, you know you're speeding. And I think just that reminder is valuable, it works in my neighborhood. And this street is similar to the one that I have in my neighborhood, so I think they would benefit from it. What my concern about the bike lane, I like the buffer, if we had the buffer the whole way, I think this would be a great implementation of the bike lane. Because I think the buffer adds a layer of safety, additional safety for that biker. What I do notice in my neighborhood in Tleca that's very similar to this street is the kids still ride on the sidewalk because they're afraid to ride on the street with just the single bike lane painted line. It's too narrow and drivers are going too fast, they're, they could be distracted. And I don't see them on the bike lane, I see them primarily on the sidewalk. So where we've implemented a bike lane on a downhill street, still people riding on the sidewalk and I don't blame them, I would do that too. So I'm just conflicted about the safety measure for bikers where they don't have a buffer. And I don't know what we can do to increase, to provide a buffer for the, you know, majority of it, that's like eighty percent or ninety percent. I think that would go a long way to addressing it. Is there any way we could do that or is it just not big enough?
I just want to note that based on the several guidelines, the minimum bike lane to the curb is four feet and the desirable width for the bike lane is five feet. And the buffer lane is, bike lane buffer is kind of recommended, is not, yeah, is not necessary. And we try to consider the buffer wherever we have, we had enough room and we could like put the buffer. And just for cases that the lane width didn't allow us, we didn't put the buffer. But, but luckily we had the five feet desirable lane width for the, for the.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, I would just think we would make a lot more friends if we had the buffer the whole way. The last question I have is on the merging from Avenue to Vista Hermosa. The one comment from the resident was it's a, you know, kind of a contest to see who can get in lead to move over when the lanes merge. Are you, how are you striping that at Vista Hermosa? Is it gonna be one lane or two?
It's gonna be two lane because we're, we're trying, we try to keep the two lane because those two lanes are kind of provide the service from, from the travel lane coming from Hermosa both direction. And we're keeping the two lanes because some of the vehicles entering to Pedriza from Hermosa, they, they will try to make a right turn at the first community.
Yeah.
At the first driveway, which is located less than like four hundred feet. So that's why we don't want to provide a lot of conflict with narrowing that to, to only one lane.
Yeah, I, okay, that's a good, that's a good answer. Okay, Mr. Chairman, those are my questions for right now, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have, I see Commissioner Prescott has mic open?
Yeah, I have, I have some concerns. Again, I support bike lanes, but I'm, I'm a little concerned in this area. You mentioned that you haven't studied whether buses use this, this street or any size of, you know, a moving truck or anything larger as a bus or large as a bus. And I'm going back to one of your researchers on the footnotes here, one of the papers that you provided. And it specifically addressed buses. It said, "Traffic lane used by buses should be no, no narrow than twelve feet in width." And this is going to be ten because the maximum bus width, including mirrors, is ten point five feet. And the desirable width from the curb to the gutter would be fourteen feet. So that's my concern is if there are school buses going through there, and this wasn't in your study where you addressed this or not. And I, I fear if we recommend this and we find out there are moving trucks, who knows what other trucks are we coming through there? That it would encroach in the bike lane and could cause a serious accident. It's very wide.
Based on what I checked with other members in the team, this route is not considered as a truck route. And also no school bus unless you tell me, because based on what I checked, I heard from the, the transportation engineer, the assistant transportation engineer that no trucks are going through and is not considered as a transit route and not considered as a truck route. And there's no school in the area to be used by, I mean, to be drawn by.
No school buses come in and pick up any, any, any children for any other school purposes, no drop off?
Not, not going through Pedriza because there is, there is only park close to Pico and the swim club close to Hermosa. And there are other residential communities along the road.
I'm not convinced, so I, I'm, I'm just, because you didn't give me that confidence at the beginning that you addressed the, the trucks or if there was a sign or if buses come through there or not. It's very narrow and I even had problems negotiating the curves at going reduced speed under forty. I was, I looked at my speed and it was thirty-five. And I'm just really concerned about putting a bike lane there. I, I, I want to feel confident when I'm in a bike lane and I want everybody's kids to feel confident. And I, I just have some concerns for this. I just don't think it's, there's a lot of questions that I, I don't have answered yet.
Okay, very good. Now, I'm gonna jump in and just ask a little procedural thing here. Adam, help me out if you can, or Zach. What we're being asked to do here is give our comments and our concerns. And this would be then reviewed by city council. They would then authorize traffic to continue a study on this and address any of our concerns and implement them where possible, is that correct?
The proposal that would eventually end up in front of the city council, that would be a more defined project. This is a recommendation about the, the nature of the project and with, there are specifics provided. But what would be provided to the council would be, would, would be more, would be specific in nature. So we would not request from the council to then go off and do additional research.
Okay, so staff has been authorized to spend the money to develop this project and engineer it? Or will that come from city council after they see this? Because I'm not sure we have, you know, we don't know the striping, we don't know the signage, et cetera. So that's gotta be resolved at some point.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not sure if this, maybe Zach Ponton or interim deputy public works director would know if, has this been included in the CIP and has, have funds already been allocated for this project?
So right now, we are scheduled to have this slowly sealed in October, and so, late October. And so that's why we're trying to get a restriping plan to council prior to that slowly sealed project that has already been scheduled to start. So as we were talking about before, as Sayida said, anytime we're restriping or slowly sealing the street, we look to see per our general plan whether or not we can add bike lanes. And those bike lanes come in different classes and sizes. And in this case, we're looking at kind of the smallest class bike lane because we can't fit a full buffered bike lane the whole way. And so per our general plan, we're basically following that and seeing that we can squeeze this in. And it is fairly common to have ten and eleven-foot travel lanes and we've been doing that for several years in the city. And we, we don't rule, we haven't ruled them out so far when it comes to kind of trash truck or a fire truck go on the street. So that'd be a pretty big change if we stopped doing that. Ultimately, I, I think Adam did say also before this street might have been in the bicycle master plan. I don't believe, Sayida, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe Pedriza was specifically identified as a route.
Not as a, as a like recommendation, not as an option, but we just consider that based on the general plan, complete the street policy.
Correct, so this wasn't a specific street identified in the bicycle master plan. But per our general plan, we are to look at pretty much all streets. When we have that ability, we'll, you know, our, our, our goal for that general plan is to try to put in those bicycle lanes, whether it be the smallest class or the largest class.
Okay. Well, I think we, I'm hearing concerns about it, but.
Are we allowed to move it along if we provided the concerns of emergency vehicles?
I, I think we can do that and we would basically.
Can't fit a full buffered bike. Can't fit a full buffered bike lane. That's a major concern as in. And as in other areas of the city, which is preferable. Uh, I can't. So if we moved along, it would be based with. A list of concerns.
Yes, we could. We certainly do that.
Solutions. I'm not.
Because we're not necessarily approving it. We're recommending basically that uh. Because in the statement adheres that we're feasible, we're feasible. And with minor revisions. So yes, appears we can make. Those recommendations and if they can't be implemented, then. Um, city council could say we can't comply with lit planning condition law.
Can I?
Tyler, I see you.
Yeah, can I? I thought we were only in the question section, so I have just some comments. Um. First of all, I'm in full support of this. I think it's. Cool. Very clear. It's the implementation of the general plan and also the bike specific plan, which I think is a separate. A separate plan that probably wants to be updated by the city just since the proliferation of e-bikes, but. I mean, it's very clear. Not only are these folks certified tra- traffic engineers and civil engineers. Um, so there's a full set of rules that they have to use and I see they're referencing the uh. California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. I mean, there's a set standard that makes these safe. Um, but also they're after referencing the NACTO standard, which are the industry standard for traffic engineering, so. I have full support for this. Um, I'm permitted with urban bikeway design guidelines as well as the street design guidelines, and so. I think this is great. Um, if you look at the map, there's no other way to get out of this neighborhood. For bikes, so. Without a bike lane, there's no safe place for bikes to go, so we might as well be providing them with a bike lane. That meets the NACTO standards as well as the California State Standards.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, anyone else want to uh? Uh, Commissioner McCocken?
Well, I I agree. I want to say I agree with the. Uh, same comments that were just made because bikers are already there. I've traveled this a lot because the the grandkids play at that baseball field at Avenue to Pico and. Or at Tulega Park. And the bikers are already there to so to have any kind of bike lane, I think, whether it's buffered or not, is an added improvement. I would just like in maybe in our comment section to make sure that the council knows that the restriction of the lane down to ten feet. My concerns just become emergency vehicles and like say, you know, the garbage collection. Because those are the big vehicles coming. Um, and the our concern about electronic speed signs. Because up here where I live uh on Las Frises. They put in those electronic signs and it does slow down the traffic, that along with a follow up by the sheriff. Um, because they electronically posted thirty-five miles an hour because going downhill, people were getting pretty fast. You know, as they approached uh La Saluda. So as long as the two comments are. You know, our concerns are forward to the council about emergency vehicles. You know, large vehicles, trash trucks, and our concerns about electronic speed signs. Being posted, I'm in favor and would so move. If this is the time to move for. You know, approval to pass on.
Okay, uh, hang on to that thought. We have two more that want to make a quick comment. And then I will call on you then uh for motion. Uh, Commissioner Cosgrove?
Yeah, I'm. What I'd like to do is float. Up um how we could um package this. So what I would um. Do in a uh, I I I'll read what I'm thinking we should do as as part of a motion to the council. That we basically ask the staff to um. Indicate that the planning commission has made the following observations. One. We have been informed by residents that downhill speed is a concern in this community. That's one point one. Point two. We therefore recommend electronic speed sign on both downhill segments of this road. Three. We have concerns about reducing the lane to ten feet. In order to accommodate large vehicles such as moving trucks. Emergency vehicles, et cetera. Or. The ideal bike lane. Striping configuration would include a buffer. And staff should be. Clear about where the buffer is and where the buffer isn't, so the council is aware of that configuration. That's what I would propose that we kind of how we package this to the council.
Okay, Commissioner Cannon, you have the final comment?
Well, I actually have some questions, but um. Does the manual of uniform traffic control devices have any criteria as to when and where it's appropriate to have bike lanes versus not?
That's mostly provide the criteria for providing the signage for bike lanes. And for example, when there is a. In different geometry and different configuration at intersection or along the road. Uh, how the marking should be implemented for the bike lane and right turn? And also where the we need to provide the signage.
Okay, so as long as the so the there's the lane width, the wet lane width criteria. And we meet the lane width criteria for the minimum with bike lanes and travel lanes, correct?
Yes, that comes that comes from mostly from Caltrans and the uh the footnote that I provided in the report. For urban bike design.
Have there been any bicycle accidents out there on Pedrizo?
Based on what I checked on the website and the crashes theory that we the city actually keep the file. And we keep updating the file. There's no bicycle crashes at that area.
Thank you. Um, are you aware of any studies? Linking the safety of bicyclists with and without bike lanes?
The safety of bicyclists?
If there's a bike lane versus if there's no bike lane?
So um, not specifically, I didn't check any study, but that's the that's my general knowledge based on. Uh, the guideline that I checked. That the additional of bike lane will provide safety because um it's gonna like um inform driveways that. There is a bike lane and you need to yield to the bicyclist. And the bicyclist cannot share. They're not sharing the the ro- the roadway. And the class two bike bike lane, class two that uh as Zach explained, is. The minimum by class type. And if we cannot provide the bike lane uh with. Uh, like marking or signage, bicyclists need to share the road, which is the. Like that should be implemented in uh corridors with very uh low speed limits. And we need to be careful that that's a separate. That has a separate criteria.
Okay, um, my two cents, I I agree. I mean, I think it's definitely worth study, but. Uh, I think that's been done and it it seems to me it's gonna be an improvement. Um, and safer situation, so I'm supportive of the recommendation to council.
Okay, uh, Commissioner McCocken, are you there? We lost Commissioner McCocken. Uh, do we have a motion and uh? The person making the motion, will they be willing to accept the uh? Uh, additional recommendations proposed by Commissioner Cosgrove?
I just have a comment on it because.
Please.
Ultimately, our concern about emergency vehicles. That all goes back to civil engineering and there are minimum standards for lane widths, and so. We can all be concerned about it, but if it meets the minimum standard, then it's it's engineered and it's safe. And I realize there's like a range for which people feel comfortable. But I think the safety has been established by those state adopted documents that establish the the minimum widths. So I think it sounds like they've tried to make things as wide as possible. And given the road width. And obviously, it's gonna fluctuate because the road width fluctuates, but ultimately. Emergency vehicles are already being contemplated by our engineering staff. So I don't know that it makes sense to forward that recommendation with the emergency vehicle. Comment because they've already done everything they can to make it as wide as possible.
Now I'm going to disagree with that because. We we tried to find out where the most narrow. Spot in this road is and we could not identify that. And if it's and if this study over here that is cited by the city. That the. The vehicles for that that width needs to be at least twelve feet. And we don't really know where the most narrow spot is. I'm not sure it does accommodate. I I think it's a wise thing. To at least recommend that this be looked into. When it goes to city council.
And uh, and Zach, would you um? Comment your experience on our ten-foot streets with um bike lanes and just a single stripe without the buffer, I think. We've got a number of them and I think they. Perform pretty well.
And I think they have in general. Um, I'm pretty familiar with a lot of our streets in town. I haven't been in this position to be designing them for too long, but. Um, ultimately, we have our standards and like Saidha says, those class one, class two bike lanes are the minimum. So that clear distance of four feet. Um, perform pretty well, but when you do do those and make them the minimum of four feet, let's say to try to increase that lane width from. Ten slash eleven to eleven slash twelve. By decreasing that bike down to four, you're now almost putting them in the gutter line, too. And so the actual amount of asphalt is now narrower now or down. And so I'm hearing a couple of different things and. Ultimately, I I I think we have the successful policy in the general plan that identifies type two class line. Bike lanes to be able to go in when possible. And we've got a pretty longstanding practice of narrowing lanes down to ten, eleven feet wide. Um, this road in particular for the. Uh, for Karen's question, I think, uh, and for the majority of it, it's forty feet wide curb face to curb face. There are a couple of points, Saidha, correct me if I'm wrong, where it goes down to just. Just above thirty-nine? I think we that we we were trying to find.
Thirty-nine point five.
Every ten feet or anything the whole length, but. And there's a couple of points where it narrows down to thirty-nine. Um, and at the intersections, it gets a little wider in some cases. Uh, but at the intersections, we're also not striping the bike lane. Fully through those intersections. That's where you're allowing the left turn and the right turns and left turns. So in general, to answer your question, Bar, it it's been a success from what I what I've seen and. Been in compliance with our general plan and our policies that, you know, they work towards for. Um, a long time when we established that new general plan update ten years ago. An earlier question about the previous general plan prior to Tulega, uh, you're talking nineteen ninety-three. I don't know exactly what that said back then prior to Tulega. Or what the county standards were because the county kind of developed a lot of Tulega before it got incorporated.
Okay, thank you very much, Zach. Um, I don't see Commissioner McCocken back. Um. So do we have someone who wants to?
Yeah, I'll take it. Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll take a stab at it. I move. That we forward to the city council. Uh, the recommendation to approve restriping. Of Comino La. Uh, de Plaza as shown. It attaches with the following observations. One. We have been informed by residents that downhill speed. Is a concern. I should say downhill vehicular speed is a concern. Two, we therefore recommend. Electronic speed signs on both downhill. Um, segments of this road. Three. We appreciate and value the uh bike lane buffer. Uh, being offered and recommended by staff and think that. Is a um. Provides an element of safety for the cyclist that should be um. Used as much as possible. That would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, now, did you have four items there or three?
Well, I've I've I decided to remove. The concern about the width of the lane. Based on the conversations that we just had. It 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 is what it isn't. Besides, I do think we if. You know, ten, if it's almost forty feet all the way around, you know, we're talking, we should. I think that the staff is doing the right thing.
Very good. Um, we have a motion by Cosgrove. Do we have a second?
If you could add the emergency vehicles, I could support that motion.
Uh, how when you say the emergency vehicles, what do you mean?
As a recommendation just to. Look at that again to make sure that there is enough room for buses. Moving trucks. Emergency vehicles. If it it's it's it is a thoroughfare through there and I I just want to make sure that that is addressed.
Um, do you have a verbiage that you'd like to put?
I would just. I would just like to add uh that the consideration would be given. To size of vehicles such as emergency vehicles. Moving vans, school buses. There's the park with the baseball. I have a feeling that there probably are buses that probably come into that park for baseball. And I just want to make sure that. At the narrowest part, we can accommodate that.
Uh, Commissioner Cosgrove, uh, are you willing to accept that?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about it because I want to make sure that we're not um contradicting ourselves because we're. I feel like the bike lane buffer is important and I wouldn't want to give that up.
No.
Right? We don't want to give that up. And so I'm just concerned that we're sending conflicting messages about. Well, maybe the roadway is not big enough. When we're, you know what I'm saying?
I'd like. I'd like to second.
Okay, we have a second.
Cosgrove's.
We have a second on Commissioner Cosgrove's um motion. Um, we can take a vote or we can, if anybody wants to. And Mal, coming out here now, we can also have um. Uh. An alternate motion, correct? That's correct.
Yeah, the substitute motion. I if there's just a way we could make the language such that it doesn't. To to me, the buffer and the bike lane is the most important benefit we want to achieve. And I just don't want to dilute that by what. I don't want to dilute that, so.
Okay.
Or how do we not do that?
Well, I I think your motion was concise. We have a.
Well, Commissioner Cray, can I just make a statement? If I make a a statement just about why I'm seconding, I think what we're doing here. Is we're giving a conceptual. Approval. To the addition of these bike lanes. It's not for us to decide the appropriate width. I mean, that's that's by engineering. And so if we start putting. You know, conditions or concerns. That can't be achieved. Then it's gonna defeat the purpose. I think we're all in favor, it seems. Of adding the bike lanes. That's the reason I think those are adequate. I like the idea of. Of reducing. The speed with the electronic sign. Um, I personally know that when you narrow the width of a. Of a lane, people do slow down. Um, because I'm often behind them. Uh, noticing that they're slowing down. So I I think. I would recommend voting.
Yeah, well, we have a we have a motion and a second by you, so we will.
I. Chairman. I. Motion that's been made, but maybe, you know, if staff is listening with. Is if this goes.
You're breaking down.
Can you hear me?
That's better.
I I'm I agree with voting on the motion that's been made, but just maybe encourage staff to revisit the. Issue relative to oversized vehicles before they take it to council. But we don't have to.
Okay, we can make recommendations staff after our vote of something like that and um. Uh, I'm sure they will be open to doing that. They've heard our discussions and know our concerns, so. We have a motion by Cosgrove, a second by uh Commissioner Camp. We'll take a roll call, roll call vote, uh, Commissioner Camp.
Can you? Can I? I'm sorry, I got called away by a choking dog emergency by my neighbor. What what's the motion on the floor?
Uh, the motion on the floor is to um. Approve or to recommendation to move uh this along the city council. And I think he with three uh comments that uh. Commissioner Cosgrove had of concerns. He was. It's not a mandate. It's um just to voice our concerns. Um, to the project for uh city council would consider.
And the three concerns?
Uh, can you repeat those again, Commissioner Cosgrove?
Absolutely, uh, the downhill speed.
Okay.
Uh, and then uh as uh to to mitigate that, we're recommending the electronic speed signs.
Okay.
And then we're just indicating that um. The bike lanes with the buffer provide the most margin of safety and we encourage that. Just, you know, we as part of the restriping plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so um roll call vote, Commissioner Camp.
Hi.
Commissioner McCann?
Hi.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Hi.
Commissioner Tyler?
Hi.
Commissioner Prescott?
I will vote yes with the caveat that you make the recommendation to look at these. I will vote yes, with the caveat that you make the recommendation to look at these. Emergency vehicles, moving trucks, school buses.
Very good.
If I live there and I'm, and, and I'm over age, I want to make sure I get that ambulance. And I will vote yes.
Uh, Commissioner McCocken?
I.
And Commissioner Crandall is an I, passes, uh, 700. And, um, a recommendation to staff, um, to, uh. Uh, review the comments by, uh. The commissioners as far as additional recommendations, just to. Voice our concern to, uh, city council and city council will also have our. Uh, minutes to review, uh, and the video. Um, if they also have any questions, so.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I would just real quick as a note that I think emergency vehicles, I think we're probably fine because. If they're going down the street with lights and sirens, people pull over, they'll drive down the middle of the road. It's probably more the issue of large, the school bus or the, or the moving trucks is probably more the issue. The staff maybe could just make sure we're good there.
Very good. And, um, staff, or do you understand those comments?
Yes. Good. I just wanted to, like, um, for comment number two, considering the electric speed sign. So, um, after a few months, then driveway adjust to the newest striping. We're gonna do the speed survey to determine the 85th percentile of the speed. The vehicles are driving through and that will, that, that may change the speed limit at, on that corridor. So we may consider the speed limit change in the future if that happens. So considering that, I mean, I prefer to wait until we do the survey if this striping gets approved. And then consider reconsider the speed limit and any speed issue, we consider the electric speed sign. Uh, as a traffic calming tool.
Right. The only question, yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just, um. Is it fairly easy? I mean, the first of all, the speed sign is going to show them their actual speed. So chances are you're going to go ahead and change the speed limit signs regardless, right? If you change the speed limit. To me, those are two separate things.
Yeah, the speed limit change is a separate thing, which is, is done based on the speed survey. And then there is a speeding issue, we need to consider a traffic calming tool like. Warning signs, like you said, electric speed signs.
I think you need to consider regardless, but you know, whatever you guys. I think it's just, I think it would be important when the, um, restriping is done and the residents see those bike lanes, if they also see that. The electronics, uh, sign going up, I think. Both sides will probably see the city's trying to make a big effort here to acknowledge that their concerns were here, heard.
Okay, um, very good. We've, uh, got a motion passed and can, uh. That will be going on to, uh, city council. So thank you very much, uh. I'm going to try Saido.
Yes.
Okay, very nice, very nice job. Good report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now in new business, Adam, uh. You had some contact with, uh, Commissioner Prescott. She found some new, uh, information from. The state on ADUs. Um, do we want to at least acknowledge that here or would you rather do on a reports of commissioners and staff?
You know, I was going to report on that, uh, as, as part of the staff, uh, report at the end of.
Okay, we will hold that till then. Uh, the next item is old business. We have none. So now we are at reports of commissioners and staff. And I was going to let, uh, you and, um, Commissioner Prescott, uh. Kind of, uh, quickly outline what you found out or what she's found out. Uh, and what your response is. We can't talk about it in depth as a group, um, since it's not on the agenda that. You can certainly report on what you found out.
I had requested clarification on, just in general, on where an ADU. Could be placed on a zero setback as opposed to, uh, adhering to regular code, which I believe is. Five foot, is that what city code is for a, a normal setback? And so I wanted to know what qualified for a zero setback. And what qualified for a non-zero setback, because I believe in the past. I was under the impression that it, all ADUs could be placed on a zero setback and, and that's not the case.
Uh, y- you're correct. Um, not all ADUs, um, um. Are, would receive the benefit of a zero, uh, lot line setback. Um, at, in the previous meeting, there was a project that included. A portion of a property that was, um, proposed for a future ADU and that, uh, wasn't. Part of the purview of the permits that the county, uh, that the commission was reviewing. In the context of that project, that particular, um, property, um. Would be able to have a zero setback, but that's not all ADUs. Um, so what we've, um, what I've looked into is, and I'm trying to find it. I believe it was the November 3rd. Um, study session, uh, we, we're going to have staff provide a, uh. An overview of ADU regulations, clarify, um, you know, where they're allowed, where they're not allowed. Um, and then the, it may, um, I may want to move that up to a new business item. Um, if there are applications that have ADU implications to them. Um, uh, before November 3rd. Uh, at this point, I don't, I don't see anything on the, on the calendar, um, but things can, um, things can get agendized. Um, uh, within a couple of weeks. So, uh, at this point, November 3rd, we will have a study session on ADU regulations and. Um, uh, if we do happen to have some applications that are coming up with ADUs in them, we will, um. We will make sure that that information is provided at a planning commission regular meeting beforehand.
Thank you very much. And this, uh, these, uh, questions arose, uh. Commissioner Prescott had, uh, pulled up the latest, uh, ADU state requirements. And it, um, I think it was 2021 mid-year was, one of those published. And it appears to be evolving as we speak, so. We're going to have to stay on top of this because things are constantly changing, so, um.
And Adam, would you be able to include, I'm assuming that it's on the governor's desk, SB 9 and SB 10 that also address ADUs?
Yes, we will, um, we will provide as much current information as we can, including things that are, um, very likely to get adopted.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, so that is reports of, uh, commissioners and staff. The next item is adjournment. Do we have a?
Sheriff Crandall?
Yes, Commissioner McCann.
Ken, real quickly, please. Last night at, uh, the city council meeting, my name was brought up and slandered, um.
I was not aware of that.
False things were said about me. I just want to, you know, kind of correct the record, uh, in public, um.
Well, let me just make sure, Mal, can we do that under staff reports?
Uh, the commissioners have a chance to comment, uh, on the agenda, so we can just, yeah, there's, there's no problem. As long as it's brief, there's no problem.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Trust me, I want it to be brief. Um. The, the individual, I don't even know her name, but she was very, you know, seemingly upset about me being on the planning. She said that I voted to destroy the Dana Point Harbor, which is not true. Dana Point Harbor is controlled and owned by. The County of Orange, uh, when I was the Dana Point Planning Commissioner, we had no votes on the harbor whatsoever. Um, she said that it was inappropriate that I attend the trolley meeting, which occurred in late July. Uh, before we became active planning commissioners on July 1st. I want to point out that I was invited by the city to attend the trolley meeting, as we're all current planning commissioners. And oh, by the way, we're all sworn in as planning commissioners before the trolley tour. And also she seemed to say that, uh, somehow the fact that I sell real estate in San Antonio Dana Point in San Juan Capistrano. Makes me ineligible to be a planning commissioner and I don't believe that's the case. So I just wanted to correct the record, uh, in public. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry that you had to go through that. Um, so do we have a motion for adjournment?
I motion to adjourn.
Okay, we will be, that was a motion by Commissioner Prescott and that is adjourning to the regular meeting of the study session. And planning commission will be held on September 22nd, 2021 at 6:00 PM via teleconference. So do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, was that Commissioner Cosgrove? So we have a motion by Commissioner Prescott, uh, second by Commissioner Cosgrove, uh, roll call vote, uh, Commissioner Camp.
I.
Commissioner McCann?
I.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
I.
Commissioner Tyler?
I.
Uh, Commissioner Prescott?
I.
Commissioner McCocken?
I.
And Commissioner Crandall is an I, passes 70. And I just want to, uh, quick comment is, I think the, uh. City's lucky to have a commission that is very concerned about safety of our. Um, residents, so very good.